Morning. Today is Tuesday, April 13th, and this is the regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using teleconferencing format for today's meeting. We are all participating via the world wide web. If you would like to make a public comment today, please make sure you are identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances, please use the raise your hand feature and wait to be recognized. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we are taking up today, we will be doing a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Very good. We have five present. This time we will move to the invocation. Chad Fagundes from Quania Church. Welcome, Chad.
Good morning. Let me pray for you guys. Would you bow your heads? Father, we pause this morning because we recognize how faithful and good you've been to us. And Father, I just pray that as this meeting goes this morning, I pray, Father, that your presence, we would be aware of your presence. Father, we'd be aware of your guidance. I pray, Father, for wisdom and discernment in all decisions today. Of course, Father, we continue to pray for the Kings County, and we pray, Father, for our COVID numbers. We pray for those who are sick. We pray for all the businesses and people with mental illnesses, Father, that are being affected. Father, we just ask for your favor in this time and your grace in this time. We pray, Father, that things would begin to get better and that we would recognize, God, the avenues to pursue as we move forward. So I pray, Father, that you bless the board this morning with your presence, your discernment, your wisdom. And we thank you for this morning, and I pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chad. Please join me in the flag salute. Ready, salute? Right. This time we'll move to item two, which is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed for each item. Madam Clerk?
I have no hands raised or written comments.
Very good. Thank you. Right. With that, we'll move to item three, which is approval of the minutes from the April 6th, 2021 regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April 6th, 2021. Verboon?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Move to item four, which is the consent calendar. Board, which pleasure on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Verboon?
Okay.
Right. We have a motion and a second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor there as well. Onto item five, which is regular agenda items, and today we start with administration, and Rebecca Campbell.
Yes, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bob Henry from the Waste Management Organization. He should be on the line.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Monthly, or excuse me, quarterly report of activities since last reported activities was January 26th. Past activities, January 28th, DTSC Part B permit modification. Corrected an error in the air sampling schedule, and then added emergency, additional emergency coordinator to the permit, so now we have a total of four. February 9th, we had to do a self-disclosure of a permit violation in San Joaquin Valley Pollution Control District. KHF failed to perform the gasoline tank quote dynamic back pressure test within the permitted time. KHF did perform the test with no failure, but was past the due date by five days. February 11th, DTSC and KHF agreed to approach for the modifications to the Cambiant Air Monitoring Plan. BTS, excuse me, DTSC to provide a letter formalizing the approach. Once we perceive that, KHF will review and comment in two weeks of receipt. When complete, KHF will have three weeks to revise the plan. The thing to note here is this is the last document that's required for the permit renewal. February 16th, Kings County Environmental Health Services at KHF, monthly unannounced facility inspection, no areas of concern, no violations. February 25th, annual community meeting, we held a Zoom meeting where we recorded on the 2019 air data and the 2019 groundwater data. We also discussed placards and contingency plan, and then, thank you, Kings County, reported on the family emergency preparedness and COVID-19. March 2nd, Department of Toxic Substances Control, they issued KHF a variance for landfill B17 to accept treated wood waste. If you may recall, treated wood waste was the permit to do, to take treated wood waste sunset on December 31st. So we, we had put into place the variance if you wanted to apply for it, if your landfill met the requirements. So we did, we were one of the first ones to get that variance. March 10th, 2021, we had field representative Clayton Smith from Congressman David Valadale's office at facility. To help him, we provided a facility overview and a tour of the facility. March 29th, DTSC, KHF, DTSC performed an unannounced compliance evaluation inspection. No violations were noticed during the inspection, however, DTSC did take records with them for review. As, even though they took records with them, we still had no, no violations. March 30th, Kings County Environmental Health Services, KHF, monthly unannounced facility inspection, no areas of concern, no violations. April 1st, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District at Kettleman, annual facility inspection, no violations were noted during the inspection. Future events, on April 21, annual community meeting, KHF to provide 2020 air data and 2020 groundwater data will go over placards, will go over contingency, and then we're going to be doing the family emergency preparedness. Indifferent from what we did a couple months ago, there will not be the COVID-19 discussion. The meeting will start at 5:30, and again, as I mentioned, it'll be a... That's all I have this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Henry?
No, I don't think this is an act item, but I think we have to accept it, right?
We do have to accept the quarterly report.
I'll make a motion to accept Bob Henry's quarterly report for Kings Waste Management.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Thank you, Mr. Henry. We'll move on to item 5B, which is behavioral health, and Lisa Lewis or Unchung Perry.
Good morning. This is Unchung Perry. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman, and the members of the board. Unchung Perry from Kings County Behavioral Health. This morning, the department is seeking approval of an agreement with Kingsview retroactively for fiscal year 2020, 2021, for $8,575,500, and fiscal year 2021, 2022, for $8,320. Kingsview is the county's largest mental health contractor service provider of a mental health services and Mental Health Services Act, MHSA, programs for Kings County and its residents. The service program included in this contract agreement are, one, mental health treatment programs, which include recovery oriental mental health services, crisis and access services, full service partnership program, MHSA, and medication services, including psychiatry services for all ages. Two, the Oak Wellness Center Program, which is a wellness center for adults 18 years and older. Lastly, they provide medical claiming and billing services for the programs mentioned above. The primary change from the previous agreement in fiscal year 2018, 2019, and 2019, 20 include removal of the oversight of the managed care plan, including all quality assurance and improvement responsibilities. This transition process from Kingsview was completed in June 2020. Adult Service Use Disorder, SUS Services, were delivered effective January 1, 2019, and the SUS Services are being continued with an alternative provider. And lastly, the consolidation of services from the contract and removal of service location, which resulted in reduction of total $1,258,177 from previous year fiscal year 2019, 2020, and a further reduction in next fiscal year 21, 2022, of the budget amount of $8,320, $320,000. Under disagreement, the department provides oversight and reporting of the program serviced to comply with the federal, state, and county contract guidelines. Program oversight is also designed to meet county whitening and state mandate. Kingsview will provide quarterly reports on all participants' demographic data, outreach activities, training, and maintain all client records in the electronic health record system. There will be no impact to the County General Fund. Behavioral Health receives funding from the State Department Health, Healthcare Services, and medical, medical health revenues to fund this contract agreement. The detailed budget and the program details are included in the agreement package submitted to your board for approval. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by the county council. Dr. Lewis and myself are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
If there are no questions or comments, Mr. Chair, move for adoption as presented. A second, Deb. Verboon?
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. We'll move to item 5C, which is community development, and we have Chuck for Greg this morning.
Good morning, Chairman. This is Greg Gaskett, Community Development Agency Director, and good morning to the rest of the board members. Here to give you an update on the Planning Commission's regular meeting that they had on April 5th and their actions. There was only one item for their consideration during that meeting, and that was conditional use permit 20-10 from Complete Wireless AT&amp;T. And this is a proposal for allowing 104-foot monopole cellular tower and equipment facility located at 15834 Seventeenth Avenue, and that is located on the northwest corner of Jersey and Seventeenth Avenues. So that item was considered by the Planning Commission. It was a public hearing. It was considered by the commission, and they voted in favor, three in favor and two absent to approve that project. And that was the only project on the agenda for their consideration that night, so if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskett. All right, back to the board. Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to accept that report.
Fagundes, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. We will now move to item 5D, which is the District Attorney's Office. Who do we have today?
This is Phil Esmond-Chade from the District Attorney's Office.
Welcome. Please.
Thank you. Well, board members, Crime Victims Rights Week will be observed this year during the week of April 18th through the 24th, and this year's theme is Support Victims, Build Trust, Engage Communities. National Crime Victims Rights Week really creates an opportunity for Kings County residents to come together and reflect on the history of crime victims' rights. And this year, we're going to celebrate Crime Victims Rights Week both virtually on our website by posting videos, and we're also going to have an in-person event this year at Hanford First Baptist Church. And that'll be from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the 24th. And, and it's really important that, for folks to come see the quilts, because the quilt unveiling is a solemn event that celebrates the lives of loved ones that have been taken by crime. Each square on the quilt really tells its own story. And although last year we were only able to unveil the quilt virtually online, this year we'll be unveiling both the 2020 quilt and we'll be unveiling the, the new quilt of this year. So we'll have all the quilts on display back to 1996, so we asked that the board proclaim this month, or this week, Crime Victims Awareness Week, and join us in raising awareness of victims' rights and services, celebrating the progress we've achieved and honoring crime victims and survivors as well, as well as the professionals who serve them. Thank you, board. And I'm sorry, the ceremony is actually on the, on the 22nd.
Very good. Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Move to now, item 5E, which is from the Public Health Department. Just handling that today.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Heather Silva with Public Health.
Good morning. Please continue.
Okay, so today I will bring forward the agenda item on the epidemiological laboratory capacity expansion grant, also referred to as the ELC expansion grant. The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021 has awarded $1.7 billion to California. California Department of Public Health has allocated 70% of those funds to the local health jurisdictions to support a broad range of areas as they pertain to the current COVID-19 pandemic and other infectious diseases. From this $1.7 billion, CDPH has allocated $8,389,941 to the Kings County Department of Public Health to continue supporting COVID-19 testing, case investigation, and contact tracing, surveillance, containment, and mitigation activities. Just to be clear, these funds can only be used for new services and not the continuation of existing services that we are still obligated to provide through other funding sources. Using these funds, CDPH has expanded the requirements on the six strategies established in the initial ELC Enhanced Detection Work Plan that was approved by your board on September 15th, 2020, in order to continue to address the COVID-19 pandemic and future infectious outbreaks. The six strategies include, but are not limited to, Strategy 1 is focused on expanding the local and state public health workforce to build expertise in healthcare and community outbreaks, including infection prevention. Strategy 1 also requires our department to build the capacity to conduct extensive contact tracing, case investigation, and having the ability to address unique cultural needs of those put at higher risk of COVID-19 and other infectious diseases. Strategy 2 is to enhance laboratory testing within our public health laboratory for COVID-19, including the multiple variants and other infectious diseases. We currently send our potential variant specimens to the Tulare County Public Health Lab, who will test the specimen in their lab, and then will send that specimen to the state lab for follow-up, which can take up to three to four months for a response due to the state lab being inundated with thousands of potential variant specimens. With all that included in the work plan, we will be able to procure, when available, the necessary equipment, including the whole genome sequencing machine, to identify the different COVID-19 variant cases in-house and will not have to use the Tulare County Public Health Lab and the state lab to identify these cases. The whole genome sequencing machine also provides us the opportunity to identify and track other infectious diseases with the ability to respond to foreign outbreak occurs. The whole genome sequencing has a broad targeting of DNA and RNA-based pathogens, including 180 types of bacteria, 42 viruses, and 53 types of fungi, and a comprehensive genome coverage of critical viral pathogens, including COVID-19 and influenza A and B viruses. Strategy 3 is focused on the California Reportable Disease Information Exchange System, also NMSK already, and Kings County was not allocated any funding to this area. Strategy 4 focuses on improving surveillance and electronic data reporting of COVID-19 and other infectious diseases from the local level to the state and federal level. Due to the specific time constraints, Kings County Department of Public Health will be required to improve our data reporting systems in order to integrate data accurately and timely into the required state systems. Our current electronic medical record is not 100% compatible with the new state reporting system, which entails a lot of duplicate data entry into multiple reporting systems. Improving our current process will allow our department to better understand the capacity, resources, and patient impact at hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, assisted living facilities, as well as homeless shelters. Strategy 5 is to assist with streamlining and supporting COVID-19 contact tracing work by local health departments. This grant has multiple requirements of creating and providing resources and tools that will help support scaled-up contact tracing, diverse case investigation efforts, and implementation of prevention strategies. This strategy also requires hiring additional staff to train and dedicate as representatives of our community and provide support for wraparound services to support populations who would be otherwise unable to safely isolate or quarantine. For Strategy 6, CDPH has expanded capacity within its hospital-acquired infection program to provide additional technical assistance and training, and has instituted several requirements for facilities around developing mitigation plans, including baseline testing and aggressive approaches for outbreak mitigation. This funding will allow our department to partner with local community-based and faith-based organizations, as well as school districts and local businesses, in order to provide assistance with prevention plans and containment measures for COVID-19 and other emerging diseases. The California Department of Public Health is highly recommending local health jurisdictions to expand their administrative staff, specifically in the area of financial management, in order to provide additional support, including but not limited to budget management, progress reports, reporting requirements, supervisory duties, and oversight of the work plan activities. This additional funding will allow our department to allocate a fiscal analyst three position for additional administrative and management support over the fiscal division. We currently have one fiscal specialist position that is fully dedicated to the ELC Enhanced Grant. The ELC Expansion Grant requires separate and complex reporting and separate tracking from the ELC Enhanced Grant, which will require additional staff needed to oversee both grants. This grant aside, there has been, there has been additional funding allocated to our department for other services that we provide. Having these increased requirements and level of complexity necessitates the addition of a fiscal analyst three position, which will also increase the capabilities to efficiently supervise fiscal activities while enhancing the accuracy and timeliness of the health department budget and grant management responsibilities. We are also requesting the transfer of an existing program specialist position from the local oral health grant into the ELC Expansion Grant to provide additional management and administrative support. Finally, because of these changes and the continued changes we will, we experience with COVID-19 and other infectious diseases, we will likely need to come back to your board to add additional staffing. There is no impact to the general fund. The allocated amount for the multi-year grant, which is January 2021 through July 2023, is $8,389,941. For fiscal year 2021, we have budgeted, we have budgeted an allocation of $208,818. The remaining allocation of $8,181,123 will be budgeted in fiscal year 21, 22, and fiscal year 22, 23. I also want to be clear that these funds can only be used for new services and not the continuation of existing services that we're still obligated to provide with other funding sources. These expanded capacity improvements for the public health laboratory made possible with these funds will enhance the ability and capacity for Kings County to respond to future communicable disease outbreaks, improve our data systems, and accomplish our mission of promoting and protecting the health and well-being of Kings County residents through education, prevention, and intervention. Therefore, it is recommended by your board, I'm sorry, it is recommended that your board approve the assistance of the epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancing detection expansion funding for continued support of the county's coronavirus response. Authorize the Director of Public Health to amend, extend, or renew any future modifications to the work and spending plan and sign any invoices pertaining to such. Allocate one full-time equivalent fiscal analyst three to the Department of Public Health Administration, Budget Unit 4111. Approve the transfer of one full-time equivalent program specialist from Budget Unit 4196 to Budget Unit 4113, and approve the budget change. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments. I think it's an exciting day to get this equipment into Kings County and provide more timely health services for the protection of our citizens, and with that...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nevs moves to adopt the project as presented by Heather.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept item E, and that is item E, A, B, C, and D. This is a fourth vote, so Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Good. We have a five in favor, so that one carries. It's time now. We'll move to item 5F, which is Public Works, and Dominic or Tim Rashers?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dominic Tversky, Public Works Department. I have a number of items before your board this morning. The first being the request to... The first, I'm sorry, is the request for the approval of the notice of completion for the Kings, Kingsview Building remodel project. Apologize, I pulled up the wrong notes. I could have just a second.
Technology is wonderful. It does exactly what you tell it to do, not what you want it to do.
Saving paper.
Yeah. There we go. I apologize for the delay. And before your board this morning, a request, the notice of completion being approved by your board. The Kingsview Building recently underwent a remodel project by Marco Construction Incorporated. This project was 100% funded through Proposition 63, and no impact was imposed on the general fund. The scope of the project remodeled the existing entrance and waiting area, provided modernization and ADA improvements, created a second entrance and waiting area for children, which is also ADA compliant with modern amenities. The lighting was upgraded throughout the building, including new paint and flooring, and some of the office spaces were reconfigured. Installation of an internal hallway security door was included, and also modification of existing bathrooms to meet current ADA standards. The total remodel project came in at just under $840,000 and was completed in late February of this year. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Dominic. So at this point, we're considering item F1, and any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, because of COVID, we weren't able to physically go over there, but I have seen the, the open house, virtual open house, and the project turned out very, very well, really. freshened up that building that really was in need of some freshening up, so I will move and I'll second that project forward.
Very good, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Good, we have a five in favor. Moshe carries, on to item two.
Very good, thank you. These two, next two should go a little smoother. Next item is requesting direction regarding potential modifications to the Kings County Parks opening, I'm sorry, operating plan as we move forward with the reopening. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, parks have been closed to the public since March of last year, and as progress, excuse me, has been made with respect to reduced transmission rates of COVID-19, the lobbies are reopening today, and coinciding with that effort, we would, Public Works is planning on opening the parks to the public beginning this Friday. We do have support from County Council and the Kings County Health Department to do so, as well as guidance from the State of California Blueprint for a Safer Economy. We are proposing certain modifications, depending on course, direction from your board. The blueprint does limit capacity to 25%, which we have included in the agenda item. However, there are some additional modifications that might be considered. One is the waiving of the gate fees, and the next, it would be a combination of declining reservations, including special events. The idea behind the gate fees is to reduce the potential for transmission and to incentivize the use of county parks to those who might otherwise be hesitant to come out and utilize the parks again. The idea behind declining reservations is to limit the size of gatherings and also to limit staff exposure. The governor has recently announced full reopening of the economy on June 15th. Of course, that's a tentative date, and any modifications would sunset when the full reopening occurs, either June 15th or when that occurs, unless, of course, otherwise directed by your board. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Discussion, comments, or more?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so I'm just interested if Dominic, if, how he would feel if the board had the appetite to go ahead and start accepting the fees instead of waiving them, and also go ahead and allow the applications for special events. I mean, Dominic is being very conservative here, is, you know, reading the report. He has the ability to accept up to 1,250 people at each park, but he's limiting that to 625, and I could appreciate that. And so based on being so conservative, I would just like to hear if it would be too much on his staff to go ahead and just open this up, Mr. Chair. It's outdoors, the kids have been, you know, housed inside for over a year now, we all know that with distance learning. You know, the weather's nice, and on the flip side, the kids are seeing everyone else open, restaurants packed to a T indoor. I think this is something, you know, as someone who's been very, taking this pandemic very serious myself, I know I would be conservative based on what I'm reading here. I would be comfortable with some form of limited special events, you know, it was reported last week that, you know, there was already the taco truck throwdown or whatever event that was at the Civic. I was across the street that night from that event and seeing a lot of people out there. I don't, I just, I guess I don't understand what the difference is for these kids to get out there, Mr. Chairman, unless it's just that big of a strain on Dominic and as the department head, then, you know, I could respect his judgment on that. But just wondered if, how he'd feel if the board had a little bit more of an appetite here, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to agree with Supervisor Valley. I mean, outdoors, they had a carnival downtown in the Hanford Mall this weekend, and it was packed full of a lot of people. I mean, it's up to us to have our, being adults, make our own minds up for ourselves. If we want to wear masks at the park, that's fine, but I think it's time to let people have their freedom back and get to the parks, and I don't know about waiving the fees, maybe do some kind of promotion to get people to get interested in going out again, but it's outdoors, it goes with the government policy by being outdoors and getting fresh air. So we're lucky we don't live in downtown New York or San Francisco or LA, we have lots of fresh air, so we're not as condemned as most people. That's all my deal. I support you, Supervisor Valley, for what you said, I appreciate that, thank you.
I'll offer a flip side, Mr. Chair, a little bit, you know, special events come with special people that be able to handle the trash and handle the cleanup and post-event cleanup. And so those events with a limited amount of population, I think, would probably do because whether it's the sheriff's posse or the schools, you know, they police their own activity, and whether it's the carnival at the mall or the food truck throwdown at the Civic, they come in and have a specific set of responsibilities by holding that event. I think the problem we put on staff is that we have a limited amount of staff, limited amount of individuals, and still a total workload of hosting those events with the current staffing. So I guess I would amend it a little bit to say, yeah, special events, as long as those special events are totally self-controlled, self, and not put any pressure on existing county staff that would have that. The flip side of that is also is to maybe waive the fees to go into the park. The park traditionally has some revenue, and it's traditionally kicked off with an Easter event that really primes the pump and gets the public interested in going to the parks and being interested in that outdoor activity. We have now missed two Easter cycles for that park's environment. We have not really, we don't end the marketing very good as far as having the parks open and letting people know that they're available. Just as the efforts we're having with public transportation, I think in order to prime the pump, you've got to give some product away. And so by eliminating the amounts of people and allowing the smaller groups, smaller individuals, that opportunity in the open spaces to go ahead and waive those fees, not expose staff to the cash, not expose staff to additional public comment, contact. The virus is still fairly active. As you can see, there was a little bit of a surge from the Easter vacation, Easter activities. While I agree with most of it in this, I think I could, again, approve special events with special modifications, not the previous arrangements we've done traditionally, and I would like to see a waiving of the fees since we're going to limit the population in the parks. That's also going to have a cutback on the potential revenue, even though, once you get past the Easter holiday, there's just not a lot of other events that fully utilize all of the park activities. That also is going to cut down on restroom cleaning, solid waste handling, all of the other things associated with groups, and by shifting that responsibility over to the responsible parties that are doing those special events, I think would help out the parks, the vision a great deal, keep our staff healthy, and again, try to prime the pump right this year off. Last year was a loss, this year is going to be a loss. Write those two years off and hopefully start 2022 in a much better position of outreach to the people.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what events are going on out there. I know the sheriff's posse, we waived those fees for the sheriff's posse, correct?
But they do all the work.
Right, so that's the only, yeah, second or third weekend in June.
Usually Father's Day weekend.
And we have Mother's Day coming before that, so, yeah, I don't disagree. I think we need to get people interested in going out and having healthy events.
You know, we have the museum out there, you know, I'm not sure if the museum, you know, we have problems with the docent, with the museum, you know, do we want to be in that business? Do we want people walking through that facility? And again, restrooms and solid waste are the two biggest concerns, and collecting money. Granted, there's a toll booth there to collect money, but some people don't get close enough. You have to get out of the booth and collect money and get closer to people. We don't have the ability to accept credit cards or credit, so I just think we need to work on that aspect of operations in the future, maybe go some kind of a park pass type deal like the way the state and federal government does, but by, you know, not trying to accelerate the opening just in the next, literally next, you know, five weeks, not try to cram all that stuff done in the next five weeks, give us some time to work on a project that would be, you know, helpful to people, and keep everyone helpful, healthy, both our staff and the public that's going to utilize those public spaces.
Thank you. I think council has some comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to make two points for the board's consideration. It was represented first that County Council supports this. County Council is neutral on this. We were aware that it was being brought, but we do not take a position because it's ultimately up to the board to decide. The second point is, with respect to waiving fees, it was represented that the board should waive the fees in order to incentivize use of the park. There is liability risk associated with anything perceived to incentivizing the use of the park. If someone catches COVID there, they could say that the board encouraged it to happen by waiving the fees, and I just want the board to be aware and weighing the risks and benefits that they consider the risk.
Hopefully have them sign a waiver that they accept all risks when they enter onto the property. Through an online account, I mean, it's easy to transfer money nowadays, you don't have to have money, just Venmo. I bought, you know, I buy stuff all the time without talking to or handling with people, so it is possible to be interested, but I do believe that it's time to get back to normal, it's another better, and I would like to see the sheriff's company have their event out there in June, a good event, and it's good for the sheriff's department to raise that money, so that's the only one I'm affiliated with, but...
Well, you've worked that event that, where's Park Foundation?
I just do for the wine.
Yeah, so...
Remember a whole lot.
You know, so there are several events...
Taste of the Valley.
Taste of the Valley, and even though I don't, I don't, it's probably been a couple of years since that event took place, when the volunteer company was active, there was usually a fundraiser out there, the lamb shish kebab.
We always waive, it seemed like we always waive the big event fees like that.
Correct.
People that raise money. Yeah, well, I think we need to start something and give it a couple months like Dominic has here, I think we'll be okay.
And the sportsman club, you know, even though it's not part of the county operations, but, you know, there are events that have to go through the, through the...
They should do a deal where, you know, if you go on, you sign up, you got your own spot, and you can capture at least 10 gophers, you get a free path for a year, show proof for the gophers, and have them on hand and redeem them for...
You know, they've done an amazing job with the gophers out there.
It'll help, though.
Yeah, they've done an amazing job, you know, the ground squirrels have just, you know, had a problem, and they've done some remarkable things with that park, it's in extremely good shape, and there used to be a lot of events, like you say, whether it was baseball, softball, some soccer events, all of the other events that used to go out there, senior day in the park, you know, that venue has hosted many events over the decades that it's been part of the county inventory, but I just think we need to evolve and probably have a study session and talk about...
Are you saying we have to have a gopher feed?
Yeah, I don't know if I'd go that far, but, you know, they have done their part to reduce the gopher population in that part of the world.
So I agree.
Campbell, I think, has some comments.
Yes, I just wanted to add another note of information. Looking at other counties, other counties are opening their parks, most of them do have online reservation systems, and they are charging full fees for that. I did look up waiving of fees, the only thing that I could find where fees were waived were for students, students going into parks, so just another note of information of what's out there recently.
Yeah, I guess I have a question as well, is what is the impact? I mean, what are the traditional fees?
The impacts if we do not charge fees?
In the staff report, oh, Dominic outlined, I outlined that in the staff report, go ahead, Dominic, thank you.
Sure, absolutely, thank you. So on average, we collect about $1,600 per month in a normal month, of course, that excludes Easter, as Supervisor Nevs indicated, is a sort of prime...
Dominic, could you maybe move a little closer? We kind of go in and out there.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, very good, thank you. So on average, we collect $1,600 a month in park fees. There may be a potential to recover the lost revenue to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, although that isn't necessarily guaranteed, but the economic loss would be $1,600 per month, and that is inclusive of the special events. I would also like to thank County Council for clarifying my earlier point. I certainly didn't mean to imply that County Council or the Health Department was supporting the modifications, my intention was to indicate that they are in support of us reopening the parks. Additionally, to address Supervisor Valley's question earlier, yes, staff can accommodate whichever direction your board directs us to move in. We are prepared and ready to open the parks this weekend in full force or in some reduced capacity. The only, the only item I suppose that we don't have much flexibility on is the 25% threshold, but again, that's 25% of maximum, so the 625 number that we've indicated is a number that we typically do not hit on a normal basis, so for all intents and purposes, there really won't be a limitation.
Thank you. I had a question as well with respect to sanitation and how you're handling that aspect of it. I mean, you've got numerous tables, bathrooms, other equipment.
So the bathrooms are cleaned on an as-needed basis per direction of risk management. We are limiting the use of the bathrooms to one individual at a time. Of course, you know, we are posting signage, we're not going to be able to police that, so obviously we can't control what the parkovers do, but in terms of cleaning the restroom, it is checked throughout the day and cleaned on an as-needed basis. Regarding the tables, we really don't do much in terms of sanitation there, with the exception of the special event areas, which include cooking facilities, and those are cleaned by staff before and after each use.
All right, thank you. Further questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to follow up a little bit on what Rebecca said, you know, we do waive the fees for these special events, and whether it's Senior Day in the park or some of the other sheriff's posse or Taste of the Valley, so we do have, I think, a history of waiving fees, and I don't think it's to, you know, it's really there to encourage usage, not to encourage liability of exposure to a virus or a bacteria or anything that may exist in open spaces, but I think, I think we do have a precedence of waiving fees. I think this would be a great opportunity for individuals to be able to get reoriented to the park that's been offline for about 14 months, and I think it's a good way to prime the pump and get the public back interested in that part of, you know, the inventory owned by Kings County.
Cool.
And if we have, maybe we have the employee barbecue out there at one of the parks and get the morale and welfare, the troops back up.
Very good. Right, some direction from the board here.
Is it all number two, A, B, C, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve as discussed, whatever the hell that was.
So you're going to put back on special events?
We're gonna, we're gonna do like we do always.
With modification?
We're gonna waive the fees until June 15th and all the other stuff, and then we'll relook at it and... And then we'll relook at it in June and see how it.
Oh, so you want to waive fees for a month and then bring it back?
Two months, till June 15th, till the governor comes out with an opening.
April, May, June, okay, the 60-day.
Yep.
Waive the fees and.
Just do like we do. We always waive fees for any special event anyways. Unless they want a private event, uh, just make sure that they handle their own, uh, like the sheriff posse does.
Correct.
Or a Taste of the Valley. They bring in porta potties on their events, so kind of limits the use of ours.
Correct.
I think business as usual, up, up, except for the way with the fees for the 60 days.
Okay, um, I think I can understand that. So Nev, Nev will second that.
We can play a cumulator.
Question is, does counsel understand that? Are you clear?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My understanding is to, uh, start with the recommendations as presented. The modifications to the recommendations would be to waive all fees, not just special events, until June 15th, uh, '21, and to put special events back on. And all of that is subject to the safety modifications that were outlined in the recommendation.
Correct.
Very good. We have a motion and a second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Very good. We have five in favor on that item. Now we're on to item three.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Thank you. So this third item is to, uh, request adoption of the rela- resolution of intent to form a zone of benefit for track 756, phase five of the Armona North subdivision in the unincorporated community of Armona. Uh, additionally, I am requesting a public hearing, excuse me, to be set for May 4th, pardon me, 2021, to hear testimony regarding the formation of the zone of benefit. And third, the third action is to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance to impose a personal tax for road improvement and maintenance within zone of benefit five. Phase four dash two of track 756 was the first phase in which the county implemented the zone of benefit model. Prior phases relied on the formation of the homeowners association, association, which would then be responsible for roadway maintenance. Inherent challenges proved this model to be ineffective. County moved forward with the zone of benefit model to collect a partial tax, which will be used by the county to provide roadway maintenance on the corresponding roadways. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dominic. I'll bring it back to the board. Questions, comments, action?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Nev moves to, uh, adopt this and set the dates as outlined by staff.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries. Thank you, Dominic. We will now move to item, uh, 5G, which is the sheriff's office and Sheriff Robinson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate your time this morning. Um, today I come before you on behalf of the Corcoran Police Department, who is the host of the Peace Officers Memorial this year for Kings County. Um, we are requesting, uh, your board adopt the resolution, recognizing they, uh, the date of May 12th as our peace officer memorial day here and the week of May 9th through the 15th of 2021 as police week in Kings County. Since 1962, every sitting president has proclaimed May 15th as peace officer memorial day and the week as May, of May 15th as police week. Uh, this year, the plan is to host the Kings County Peace Officer Memorial in the Kings County Government Courtyard on May 12th, 2021 at 10:00 AM. In speaking with, uh, Gary Kramer, the Assistant Chief of the Corcoran Police Department, um, he is working closely with, uh, the health department to make sure that if we're able to conduct that event, it will be, uh, following all the current, uh, guidelines in place. And so I would request that your board adopt the res- resolution designated May 12th, 2021 as peace officer memorial day and the week of May 9th through 15th, 2020 on as police week in Kings County with the memorial cer- ceremony to be held on May 12th, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, back to the board for, uh, discussion, action.
Second, Verboen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We have, uh, five in favor. Thank you, Sheriff. We'll move on to item 5H, which is, uh, administration and Ms. Campbell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the board. Rebecca Campbell, County Administrative Officer. Since January 1 of 1989, the California Constitution, Constitution has required that a sheriff of a county have special training requirements. And those special requirements are related to an advanced certification issued by the Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training to meet a number of certain educational degree and full-time salaried law enforcement experience requirements. This year, Senator Scott Wiener introduced Senate Bill 271 on January 28th of 2021, which would change those requirements. This bill would open it up and allow all registered voters to run for sheriff, regardless of their training requirements. In order to keep the accountability and public safety quality as it is, um, we are requesting that your board oppose this bill. The sheriff did appear, Sheriff Robinson did appear last week in front of your board to address his concern with the bill. So we are asking today that you authorize the chairman to sign the attached letter opposing Senate Bill 271.
Thank you. Okay, bring him back to the board for, uh, questions, comments, discussion, or action.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I read the, uh, letter. I'm sorry. Uh, I read the letter. It's, it's a good letter. I appreciate the sheriff, um, bringing this to the board's attention, this piece of legislation. Uh, I agree with them 100%. I mean, you're, the, the Marine Corps is not going to let a civilian come in and be the commandant of the Marine Corps and oversee Marines, and I, I, I just don't see this happening as well. You need someone with public, uh, and law enforcement, um, background and the training to come in and work with the hard-working men and women of our, um, California, uh, uh, police officers, in my opinion, and, and I think we, we could back that up today by being in support of, of, uh, a, a motion as presented to approve the signing of this letter. And I thank the sheriff again. Thank you.
Yeah, you cut out a little bit. Was that a motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Very good. Five in favor. Motion passes. Thanks for that. And now we'll move to item, uh, 5I, which is administration, and Ms. Campbell again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a weekly item on the status of the COVID-19 pandemic in Kings County. The last update was given on April 6th to your board. Looking at state activity, the governor did announce this past week that vaccination supply, as well as stable and low hospitalization rates, the state will reopen the economy June 15th, lifting the restrictions in the blueprint for a safer economy statewide. California has administered 20 million doses statewide, which include 4 million doses among the lowest Healthy Places Index, or HPI, quartile. In the weeks ahead, the state will continue to monitor the hospitalization rates, vaccine access, and vaccine efficacy against variants, with the option to revisit the June 15th date as needed. Post-reopening, the face covering mandate, testing, and contact tracing will continue. On the federal side, in vaccine news, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Becerra announced that all funded health centers and health center program look-alikes nationwide will be able to participate in the Health Center COVID-19 vaccine program. These are defined as HRSA-funded health centers. Health centers will have the opportunity to join the program as soon as they are ready, increasing the total number of invited health centers to 1,470 nationwide. A couple of updates hot off the press today. The news outlets, um, and the Food and Drug Administration, together with the Center of Disease, Disease Control and Prevention, were recommending a pause on the rollout of Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccine after several incidents of severe blood clots in recipients. According to the FDA, there have been six reported cases of the rare and severe type of blood clot in over 6.8 million Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-9 vaccine recipients. Another item hot off the press, uh, FEMA announced COVID-19 funeral assistance. So the recently enacted American Rescue Plan Act, as well as the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021, authorized FEMA to provide financial assistance to COVID-19-related funeral expenses incurred after January 20 of 2020. The agency began accepting applications on Monday through the dedicated call center. The COVID-19 funeral assistance line number is 844-684-6333. Hours of operation for that call line are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM Central Time. On the county front, the Emergency Operations Center continues to meet. I'm happy to report to your board that in our own county operations, we haven't had a case of COVID-19 for about a month now. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Director of Public Health, Mr. Edward Hill.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At Hill Public Health, I'd like to start off my report as I always do by reminding those the simple steps we can all take to protect ourselves from communicable diseases such as COVID-19. Uh, those are frequently wash your hands for 20 seconds or more. Don't touch your face with unwashed hands. Stay hydrated with water. A hydrated cell is a healthy cell. Stay home if you are sick and wear cloth-based coverings to protect yourself and loved ones. Uh, our current numbers for today, we have collected 208,314 COVID samples. We currently have 268 results pending. We're currently monitoring 4,063 individuals. Our current taste, or case total since the outbreak began is at 15,502, unfortunately with 226 deaths. Uh, our cases closed at this time are 11,214, leaving 4,062 open cases. Uh, the skilled nursing facilities have not changed since our last report. They have a total of 311 cases since the outbreak began. They currently have zero open cases, 269 closed cases, and unfortunately, 42 deaths. Uh, state prison outbreaks have also, as mentioned last week, settled down. Uh, there's been only one change in their cases, bring it to 7,664 since the outbreak began. They've collected 126,956 samples. They currently have 16 results pending. Uh, their current open case at this time is at one, with 7,645 closed cases and unfortunately, uh, 17 deaths. They are showing zero hospitalized at this time. We are, continue to watch hospital data closely and continue to see a, a decrease both in general or med surg admissions, as well as ICU admissions, both locally and regionally. As of 4/11/21, the local hospital had six med surg or general admission, uh, COVID patients and zero in the ICU. Uh, we continue to maintain the PPE as mentioned before in the past. Uh, the mobile testing program site for the schedule, or excuse me, schedule for this week is up on our website. Uh, and I still, unfortunately, have not heard anything about the testing expansion with municipalities, still waiting on an answer for that. Uh, as part of our epidemiological lab capacity program, um, we continue to send out our health education team. Uh, they are working to increase testing and signing people up to get vaccinated. Uh, and last week, we did see a slight increase of individuals getting tested compared to the previous week, uh, as a result of their work. Our current metrics for the blueprint, our new cases per 100,000 is at 2.8. With, uh, that's our adjusted rate. Our unadjusted rate is at three. And again, we continue to see a, a decline in cases, uh, new cases every week. Our, our overall testing positivity is at 1.5% and our testing positivity in the lowest quartile of the HPI is at 1.9. So this means that, uh, our new cases per 100,000 meet orange-tier criteria and our testing positivity in both of the areas now meet yellow-tier criteria. Uh, our test per 100,000 has decreased to 354 on average per day. And, uh, but we did see a slight increase over that testing over this last weekend, which will be reported out in the next couple of days. If, and, uh, just so that it's clear, if our numbers continue to move in this direction, uh, we would be moving to the orange tier as early as next week. Uh, I just want to remind everybody again, though, that we should be reaching the two-week mark from our last, uh, holiday event or Easter Sunday. So we do expect to see a, a slight increase during that time. Uh, but we're thinking that it's going to remain to decline over, uh, the long period. Uh, the state, as mentioned by Ms. Campbell, did achieve the $4 million dose administration mark to those living in the health equity or the, uh, Healthy Places Index quartiles. So the state did modify the blueprint criteria. Also mentioned by Ms. Campbell, the state did issue a press release communicating that because of the development of vaccines and decreasing hospitalizations, uh, the state opens, hopes to open up, uh, and move past or be, what they call beyond the blueprint on June 15th. Uh, however, I do need to point out that this is not going to be an automatic, and the state did include some categories that need to be met, which are a steady supply of vaccines, which we don't think that are going to be an issue moving forward. But then also, they don't want to see large increase in hospitalizations regardless of vaccine status, but they're especially interested if we start seeing folks that are fully vaccinated start to be hospitalized. Uh, and then, of course, the mask requirement, as well as testing and vaccine requirements for organizations will continue after the June 15th change. On the vaccine update, uh, we, on April 7th, we expanded vaccine eligibility to all those 16 years and older for Pfizer, uh, in the county, and we saw a slight increase in vaccine appointments, uh, but not as much as we anticipated. Last week, between public health and OptumServe, we administered 3,054 doses. I need to also, uh, once again clarify that that is only between Optum Serve and public health, as we do have plenty of other vaccine providers within the county. Uh, we have plenty of vaccine-available appointments so far. Uh, and then again, uh, we did open it up and then, and, uh, hope to increase our vaccine usage, but we did not see that. We did, uh, have a partnership last week with the Hamford Soup Kitchen. They partnered with a prenter few foods and they administered almost 200 doses, uh, onsite in downtown Hamford. Uh, we'll be doing additional outreach and working on vacci- vaccinating those experiencing homelessness this week in Corcoran, as well as throughout the county. Uh, so far, there's been 49,097 vaccines administered to Kings County residents. Uh, we continue to work through issues that we experienced with the third-party administrator. The biggest issue right now is working through their vaccine ordering process. It is quite a lift, uh, both for the TPA, as well as for the local health department, to, uh, reorganize how that process works. And then, as also mentioned by Ms. Campbell today, the FDA and CDC did release a joint press release stating that they are suggesting, uh, vaccine providers pause the administration of the Johnson &amp; Johnson secondary to those clots and those six individuals out of the 6.8 million, 8 million, uh, folks vaccinated. Uh, we have not heard, actually, uh, we did get a meeting request for, from CDPH at 9:30 this morning. Uh, we do have staff on that call, uh, but out of abundance of caution, we are also canceling all of our Johnson &amp; Johnson clinics until further notice. Uh, this concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Questions, comments from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just clarification. Was that 49,000 vaccinated in Kings County?
Supervisor Valley to the chair, that's 49,097 vaccines administered to Kings County residents.
Good job, sir.
Good, thank you. Okay, I don't see any more questions, comments. Mr. Rebecca, you got anything else?
That is all I have. Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, we'll move to item six, which is board member comments, announcements, reports. Supervisor out.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry. If Ed Hill's still on, can I use my time just to ask him if he, uh, if, uh, you know, just what specific message should we give out to the folks regarding J&amp;J? So there isn't, there isn't a panic, um, you know, with that, with that news rolling out, specifically to people who, who already received it and, uh, so maybe something we can get ahead of. Um, do, do you mind if I use my time for him just to touch up on that?
Sure.
Thank you.
If he's still there. Mr. Hill, are you still there? Did you catch that question?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I meant to come, uh, go back on mute when I finished my report, accidentally hung up, and I just dialed in and just heard the last two words of Supervisor Valley's comment. I apologize.
Yeah, his question was, um, with respect to, uh, the latest announcements with J&amp;J. Yeah, his question was, with respect to the latest announcements with J&amp;J, what is kind of the leading words of caution at this point with respect to that pause and the message to the folks that may have received it?
The message to them would be to monitor for any side effects of that medication, specifically, you know, anything that would indicate some type of blood clot, which would be pain in the legs or behind the knee, or any other long-lasting side effects of the vaccine. Also, if they have any concerns, to reach out to their primary care physician to discuss their specific medical conditions with that physician, and for further follow-up.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay, we'll move to Supervisor Nows.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, First Fight Commission held their monthly meeting discussing some of the issues and moving forward with the change of operation, which will be coming back to this board in the future. Cal Vans held our monthly meeting. The usage is increasing significantly now seasonally, and moving forward, we still face some challenges with that operation, but continues to move forward, and you always get a little bit nervous with any kind of seasonal operation, and you get a little bit nervous when you seem to think things are going a little bit slower than you anticipate, but they always seem to work out. Looks like that organization is in that upward curve, and hopefully will be able to meet the demands, as well as continue to operate in an efficient and meaningful manner. South Fort Kings, on Friday morning, we met as a financial committee and overlooked not only the current budget, but also made some assumptions and plans for the future, and that will be on the meeting agenda for this Thursday as well, and continue to work at Lomor High School in the baseball and softball region, and continue to fire the cannon and make all the officials jump as much as we can. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You had surprise for goodness.
I'm good.
Thank you.
I'm good, too. I attended the Speedway races this weekend with Mayor Jerry Dyer, spent about four hours with him. He threw the green flag at the races and got to stay in the winner's circle with the winner of the race, which was the local driver, so it was kind of cool. First attempt at opening up and having grand fan seating with online ticket sales only, and thank you, it was a good success. Lot of activities in the community this weekend, kind of scary that hopefully that we don't have any outbreaks from that, but I think people are happy to get out and breathe the fresh air. Beautiful weather, it'll be hot soon, so hopefully continue on, so thank you. Oh, we had a community development meeting on Thursday morning, I believe, or Wednesday morning.
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority, yeah.
Housing Authority meeting, yeah, and change some, yeah, reorganize some debt, continue to move forward in human relations or human resources.
That's going good, so we're doing a good job. So, thank you. Okay, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you, and pretty light week last week, but on Monday morning, was invited to join a call, a conference call with USDA on a new program. It's referred to as 30 for 30, this administration's kind of attempts to push the climate change effects and try to work on carbon-based issues. So we met with numerous staff members that didn't have a lot of information about this program. They asked for comments based on the program, so it was a bit of a challenge to throw comments out, but obviously, carbon-based issues, carbon sequestration have always, I think, been a, you know, important positive that agriculture provides and hasn't been recognized, and for some reason, with respect to agriculture and communities and the positives that agriculture provides, and so I hope that that will be part of it. I think, you know, one of the chief USDA staff in this respect is Robert Bonney, who is the Deputy Chief of Staff for Policy and Senior Advisor on Climate, and I've read some of his previous workings, or his drafts, and was, his comment was that rural America doesn't really believe in climate change, so we need to develop programs to pay them, I think, to try and believe in climate change, and, I don't know, create an olive branch, but we'll keep an eye on this 30 by 30 issue. It may be an opportunity for, you know, voluntary enrollment in conservation plans and easements that will provide benefits to the environment, and maybe put a few dollars in agriculture's pocket as well. So with that, that's all I have. We'll move to Board Correspondents, upcoming events, and future agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanted to say thank you to you, Mr. Chair. There was a policy update that went out statewide last night, and it did talk about Supervisor Peterson representing all counties within California on the Rural and Ad Committee at the National Association of Counties, so thank you, Supervisor. In Board Correspondence, the Armona Community Services District did submit a letter to your board regarding their COVID-19 impact from Waste Management. Public notice regarding permit modifications in there for you. Upcoming events, we actually have some events this week. From Waste Management, the Kettelman Hills Facility 6 Annual Information Meeting will be held on April 21, and that is an electronic Zoom event at 5:30 p.m. The Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board put out their meeting notice and agenda for April 22, 2021. A reminder of all the victim witness events this month, on April 22, will be a virtual unveiling of this year's quilt at 6:00 p.m. on the Victim Witness Facebook page, and also at the First Baptist Church from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., is what I heard, will be the quilt display event on the 22nd. As your board directed, administration is planning a virtual event on May 4, information session for the, all of the special districts. We are working on a flyer, and we'll have that out shortly. Upcoming agenda items, the COVID-19 update will be back next week. From Health Department, a couple of items, an amended agreement for an immunization grant. Also, adverse childhood experiences aware subcontracts. From Community Development Agency, a public hearing regarding rescission and simultaneously entering into a new Williamson Act contract. From Public Works, there'll be a purchase of new alternative fuel vehicles. From Human Services Agency, in combination with the district attorney, we'll have Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month resolution coming before the board. And from County Council, an update to the Conflict of Interest Code. Further down the line, in May, the Finance Department will bring an update on the final report of the coronavirus relief funds. That's all I have in upcoming items. Thank you.
Right, thank you. So we'll move to Item 7, which is closed session and deciding to initiate litigation. We have one case, it's under Government Code Section 54956.1D4, and I'm counseling to expect any reporting of.
No, we do not.
Thank you, and I got it right this time. All right, any further items to come for the board this time? Hearing none, we will move to closed session, and just as a reminder, at 11 o'clock, we have the California Public Finance Authority regular meeting, so at this point, we will adjourn to closed session. Any adjournments?
I know.
Sir.[1183.15]
Aaron, are they aware that it's not working?
Yeah, Rebecca says that I just texted her. She said, yeah, we know. They know. So. Okay.
We had to reboot it.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Supervisor, they are having issues. They had to reboot it so they get back on right now. Good job. You, Richard Valles.
Looks like we're ready to go, everyone.
Okay, very good. Today is April 13th and this is the this is regularly scheduled meeting of the California Public Finance Authority meeting. Would you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley?
Here.
Doug Verboen?
Here.
Craig Peterson?
Here.
Richard Fagundes?
Here.
Good. We have five in attendance today. We'll move to item two, which is approval.
I move, we will be approved, April 6, 2021. Ten seconds.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Good. Awesome. That's five in favor. Now we'll move to item three, new business. And sure, who we have on today? To, oh, Caitlin, this area.
Yes. Good morning or good afternoon, I guess. I'll be presenting this item today for Kendall at Sonoma, which is a Zen-inspired community. It's a California nonprofit public benefit corporation. And it has two corporate members, the Kendall Corporation and the San Francisco Zen Center. The borrower will operate a continuing care retirement community in Healdsburg, California. It will consist of 201 market rate units, 20 below-market independent living apartments to accommodate retired Zen teachers, pretty assisted living apartments, and 24 memory care suites. The borrower is currently in the pre-development stage, but they expect to break ground on this community in June this year. You may recall that the board did approve and we did close the financing for Kendall at Sonoma back in October of 2019. And that was just for some kind of pre-development costs. So today, the borrower is requesting CalPFA to issue up to $350 million to assist in paying for the cost of the project, to fund interest on the bonds and fund a service reserve fund. And again, this is for the financing of the acquisition, development, construction, improvement, and equipping of a 275-unit senior living facility. Tuffler was done by Kings County and Sonoma County on March 2nd. The project will include a tax-exempt permanent tranche that will mature in no more than 35 years and bear interest at an average coupon rate not to exceed 6%. They will be, the bonds will be sold through a negotiated public offering. The project has a number of public benefits. It will provide seniors safe and healthy living accommodations that range from independent living to assisted living and memory care support. Additionally, residents will have access to wellness programs and support services. And the project does anticipate employing more than 150 staff members once up and running. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the Enzo Village project, if there are any.
Very good. Thank you. Right, we'll bring it back to the board. Any questions?
If there's no question in the comments, all approved revision number 21-088 for Kendall at Sonoma, a Zen-inspired community. I don't know if that's infantile or for, you know, like
Earth colors.
Earth, okay, all right.
Earthy colors.
I make a motion to approve the Zen-inspired community.
Ten seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, I should ask, do we have any public comment?
I do not have a written or hand raised.
Okay, very good. So with that, would you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is public comment. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Five minutes allowed for each item. Do we have any requests?
I do not have anyone with their hand raised or written comments.
Very good. Thank you. Right, we'll move to item five, which is staff updates. Caitlin, do you have anything for us today?
I have no updates for you today.
Thank you. All right, we've come to item six, and that is adjournment. So thank you all for joining today, and we'll see you next time. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.